Gloria. Gloria will be followed by Annette Lucas.
Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is Gloria Mercado Fortine and I am President of the William S. Hart Governing Board of Trustees. And I am here representing the Hart District today and in support of SCV's application, SCV-TV's application to operate the local public television, Channel 20. The Hart District values the educational opportunities that SCV-TV and Channel 20 have provided to our students and we look forward to continuing to work with SCV-TV in the future to ensure that continuation of these opportunities as Time Warner Cable steps away from the operation of Channel 20. Time Warner's Channel 20 studio has been used regularly by our Regional Occupation Program and you heard from one of the instructors and some past students. And also Hart District TV, school video clubs and television production classes as well as individual classroom teachers and parent organizations. Programs such as Newsmaker of the Week produced by SCV-TV have offered opportunities for our board and staff to communicate with parents and community at large about issues of importance to the district while simultaneously serving as a laboratory for our ROP video production students. Also, SCV-TV news program has provided the community with information about many Hart District programs and events. Both Leon Warden and Mike Mizetti have played key roles in the success of these programs for our students and staff. We also value the publicity that SCV-TV routinely provides through the online nonprofit news center where all of our press releases and newsletters are posted. As Channel 20 transitions from Time Warner Cable to an independent operator, it is our hope that you will select SCV-TV to operate and manage public television production in the Santa Clarita Valley. Thank you.
Thank you Gloria. And our final speaker will be Annette Lucas.
Hi, my name is Annette Lucas and I reside in New Hall. Mayor Keller and members of the council. This will be very short, very sweet. I had a list. Everyone basically covered it beautifully. Now, alls I have to say is please reject the staff recommendation. We do need public access TV. Thank you.
Thank you, Annette. I have two comment cards on this matter also. They, let's see, one is in opposition. Leon Warden has experience, dedication, knowledge and drive and does all of this now with no pay. Another one is in support of the recommendation. Supports the council's recommendation to direct the city manager to proceed to oversee the management of the city's public television operation. Okay, with that, if I may call upon the city manager or a designated staff member, Ken, is there any comments that we would like to bring forward?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Really, I'd like Kevin Tenoyan to make a quick presentation. I would like to comment, though, that the recommendation is certainly nothing against any of the work that Leon or the people that work with Leon have done. Leon has done just a fantastic job with the TV in Santa Clarita. And the recommendation that we're making this evening is not something that I would envision as an ongoing solution to public access TV. My concern is the economy is very poor. It's shrinking and I am growing increasingly concerned about what could be happening with the city's revenues in the coming months. And I'm very reticent at this point to recommend to the city council an additional service that could be upwards of several hundred thousand dollars a year. But again, none of that, I don't want the council to think any of that reflects poorly on the work that Mr. Warden has done. So with that, if I could, Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Kevin Tenoyan.
Please.
Mayor, Council, Kevin Tenoyan with the Technology Services Division. The city manager really covered most of my points, so what I'd rather do is make myself available to any questions you might have.
Counsel?
Can it remain P-E-G under the former requirements of P-E-G?
Yes, that's our intention.
Time Warner is just backing out, but the P-E-G requirements remain, correct?
That is correct.
Now, with that being said, the whole difference between sponsorship dollars and advertising dollars, is there any new flexibility in regards to that?
Yeah, the city actually entered into an MOU with Lauren Broadcasting and part of their six-month pilot program incorporated the use of sponsored advertisement into their shows that they use to offset their production cost. Even with that, they still ran, my understanding, in the red, but that is certainly an opportunity that is available.
Go ahead. What is the current cable reach for Channel 20 locally? Do you know what the numbers are? I mean, the households?
Yeah, our best information right now is that Time Warner Cable has a penetration of about 40,000 homes, give or take. We're seeing more and more penetration these days, both from a competitive service that satellite providers offer as well as from AT&amp;T services that are now available.
Okay. I think one of my greatest concerns as a broadcasting major who did work at a television station when I was in college, that it's being portrayed as though if we take the staff recommendation, there will be no more public access to the television station. Are we not still able to offer the educational opportunities and the partnerships and all those things, or is that gone?
No, I wouldn't say it's gone, Councilmember Ender. Under the proposal in front of the council, the studio would remain in operation, but more as a playback facility, at least initially, as opposed to a full production studio, which Time Warner has the staff resources available to do currently.
You know, that's the main thing. I think the thing that seems so strange is, and this is tough to talk about the media when they're sitting in the room, but you know, there's an accusation that, you know, we have to create this independent news source. Well, if it's the Signal and the radio station doing the TV, that's not, I mean, those are two existing things. It's not like a whole third new thing is going to come in. So that sort of concerns me. It's strange that there was only one proposal that ended up coming through. I'm sure Leon has done a terrific job. It just seems that if there's, there should have been more opportunity for, it would be nice to have a completely different source, but this is not a 24-hour news channel. It's a public access station with lots of different things. So, I mean, there's all this discussion about, you know, news, we have to have news, news, news. You know, that's not my impression of what, you know, we're talking about the senior center stuff and publicizing the Hart District things and giving the kids an opportunity. That's all wonderful. That doesn't sound like, you know, CNN's coming to Santa Clarita. And maybe that's just me, but, and that's great if somebody wants to. Fair and balanced.
Lorraine?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, PEG. You know, it took me a long time to understand it until I was at the studio a lot. I don't think I really fully understand when the city and it was required and government was required to have public access. But it is, it is an amazing thing to go in and watch the public portion, the education portion. We're the government portion right now. This is the government portion. This is, and Kevin, I don't have any questions, so relax. Staff works way too hard and puts in way too many hours as it is. But, I mean, when they go in, different nonprofits will go in, students learn the business, they learn how to direct people, they learn how to run cameras, they learn how to do media work, they learn all the technical back with the soundboards. They do educational shows with nonprofits or with the Historical Society, or they'll, they show theatrical events. There's cameras that go out on the Fourth of July. We show the Fourth of July Parade. They do all kinds of public work that, historical things, I mean, just, it goes on and on and on and it takes a tremendous amount of work. And then when somebody starts talking about, well, now that it's changing, you can have commercials and different kinds of programming, do we, the government, really want to decide whose commercials run? Do you really, as a government, want to decide what kind of programming runs? Because if you're in that business, you're going to come under attack. We're not the public, we're the government. And so it's really good to have somebody else doing it. You don't want to lose what we've had and it's a tremendous coalition of work to do it. You already have staff that's overloaded and overworking. It's a black hole. And yeah, there's grants out there. It is changing and there's money and there's opportunities. And when the community comes in and says, "We think that it should be done outside of government," I'm paying attention. And I think that we really have had a wonderful opportunity. I don't want the nonprofits to not have that support and ability to do everything they've done and to reach out. And I know that the arts was in here a couple of weeks ago. There is amazing talent in this valley. You've got to have camera crews to go out and reach it. And there's ballet and there's choirs and there's orchestras and there's theater and those things ultimately can reach the channel because we have that gift, the talent, the art, the kids, the sports. It's all here and the only way to get that from where it is into somebody's living room is through that Channel 20. It's tremendous responsibility. It's way too big for government. And I'd really like to see us have staff go back and sit down and work with this a little bit more because I can't, I can't imagine somebody just sitting at a panel in there and saying, "Well, you know, come on in, you can use the channel." That's not how it works. People don't come in and just say, "Oh, here's my DVD, run it." It doesn't work that way. I'm not worried about the news. The news is, that's going to happen from some media forum some way. And yes, it would be nice for news to be there like it can be, but I'm really concerned about the broader context of the schools, of the arts, of all of the performing groups, of the nonprofits, all the people that have used this, all of the ways we have done shows and all of the incredible amount of talent that has taken to do it. And I just can't see the city of Santa Clarita being that all-being entity that's going to make that happen. As talented as I think the city is, and it's a great gift to have a city, the city can't always do the same thing that private enterprise can do. And I think we should look at this and think about it a little bit more. I don't think we're there yet.
Thank you, Lorraine. Marcia, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, I do.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you will, please.
I have several questions. I guess I'd like to know, do we have to completely retool and re-retrofit the equipment for the studio?
Mayor, Councilmember McLean, not totally. We would get some of, we'd buy some of their equipment and buy some additional equipment with the PEG money that can only be used for capital expenditures.
And I guess I'd like to know, what did it cost? Do you have an operating budget? What did it cost Time Warner to run the studio as it is being run right now?
I don't know that, but Mr. Tenoyan may?
Mayor, Councilmember McLean, staff's understanding is that Time Warner committed about $225,000 to $275,000 a year to manage the existing studio.
Okay, and then in the report, the memo that we got on October 10th, it states that the city will be receiving approximately $300,000. Is this per year?
Yes.
Okay. If you can't use it for anything except equipment, what good is it to have the money?
Well, I understand where you're coming from on that. The use of those funds, as staff understands, is tied to federal law and the way the law currently is written, it's specific that those funds are used for capital or capitalized type purposes, so they cannot be utilized for operating, meaning paying staff.
Okay, so if that money is available, then couldn't the money be used to offer the studio for nonprofits? Is, that's not paying salaries, that's simply running the studio so that it can be used by nonprofits? Or am I not understanding?
For clarification, are you asking if the money can be used to lease the existing facility?
Not leased, well, okay, leased for a little bit of money so that the nonprofits that are using it today can continue to use it.
Working with the attorney's office over the past few months, there is a comfort level on staff's part that we could show the lease of a facility as a capitalized cost and use those PEG funds to continue that, but to make those funds available for the operating side, specifically the staff commitment, is something that we do not believe is legally permitted.
Okay, because this sounds, it just doesn't sound right to me. If the companies are made, the franchises are made to pay 1% of their fees for public educational television, then I don't see how we can take the money and not make it available for public television.
Well, I can certainly tell the council that we do use these funds for equipment needs. Some of those monies were allocated late last fiscal year for some of the retrofits and upgrades to this facility and those funds can be used to go out and acquire additional production equipment for that studio that we're leasing, as well as banked over time and used for a future facility, if that's the desire of the city at some point in the future.
Yeah, I just, I just don't feel comfortable. I don't think we know enough. I, I think it's too soon to vote on this issue tonight because I would like to know also if, if the way SCV, SCTV has been run as a nonprofit, how were they able to use the studio the way they use, use it? And why couldn't that continue?
Currently, the studio is operated by Time Warner and that was a pre-existing requirement of their franchise with the city of Santa Clarita that was really adopted by the County of Los Angeles just a few months before we incorporated. Over time, since 1996, they managed, operated and staffed that facility. With new state law, the provision of that law gave them basically an escape clause that they chose to exercise in two ways. One, they chose to exercise it by entering into a state franchise that was effective January 1 of this year. And the law allows them to basically capitalize their ongoing obligation to cities, make capital funds available, and as of January 1, 2009, they are no longer legally beholden to the city to continue operating the studio.
I understand that. I still, I need more clarification. I need more information that I don't have tonight. And I'm, and I'm wondering how it can be worked out so that we do have the schools be able to use this. I watch Hart TV, you know, I watch the programs. I don't agree that there's this, all this news agency stuff going on. When I watch it, there's no news, we have Newsmaker, so I don't see anything, you know, where the city is going to take over the news because there really isn't a news agency operating now, so I don't, I don't agree with those statements at all.
Mayor? Councilmember McLean, there's really nothing in this recommendation that would prevent nonprofits from using the station. Part of what we're after is, this is certainly a relatively limited amount of money for six months to kind of get us started and really to learn about this. I don't think, as I mentioned, this is the best way to go for the long run. What it would do is give us an opportunity to get in there, to learn about it, learn a little bit more about what happens with the city's revenues over the six months. And I would envision that we'd want to do something different in the long run.
So what happens to the programs that are being aired now? Newsmaker of the Week, you know, the Hart News Program, the COC News Program? What happens to those in the interim?
If they turn in tapes, they could be run through the station, right Kevin?
That's correct, and that's the point I wanted to make for the council. Our recommendation this evening really is trying to put the city in a position where we continue, can continue to make public television available for the community and continue to operate that facility in a way where local producers, including the school districts and nonprofits, can still bring pre-produced DVDs where we would manage the playback of that. What I can tell the council is likely not envisioned, at least in the early going, is having the staffing capability to provide that onsite production support. But in terms of continuing to provide an outlet for our schools and nonprofits to be able to get their information out on Channel 20, absolutely, that is the intention of this recommendation.
Did they use the studio to produce their programs in the past?
It varies. Some local producers will come to the studio and drop off their DVDs. Others will come and make time in the studio and use the assistance of the Time Warner staff to produce their shows onsite.
And what percentage, I mean, who would not be able to do that now? What, my question is, is what is happening now that would not be able to happen if we go ahead and say we're going to take this in-house?
For the foreseeable future, meaning the next six months, January through June, we should be able to provide a comparable service with the exception of making staff available to do the onsite production. Some of that will be because of the limitation or expertise of the staff involved to do the production. Some of it, to be very honest, may be because of the lack of equipment. At this time, we still do not have a definitive understanding of what Time Warner is willing to either give to us or make available to us through a purchase and if they're willing to even make available their best equipment. We understand that a lot of it right now is being looked at to be outsourced to other studios that they're going to continue to manage.
Yeah, well, I just, I know times are tough monetarily, but I'm not, I'm not satisfied at this point that we've looked at it deeply enough. At least, I haven't. Maybe staff has, but I haven't. I haven't seen it.
Thank you, Marcia. And I think, Lorraine, you had another question?
Kevin, I have a question for you. How much do we collect in franchise fees?
The city currently collects about $1.2 million a year in franchise.
Does that include the 1%?
No, that does not.
How much is the 1%?
We have six months of experience with that and to date, we've collected about $150,000.
So, $1,350,000 a year?
Roughly.
Roughly. And that's going to be every year?
Provided more people do not go to satellite where there is no franchise obligation, yes.
And the majority of programming, I think, council, that I've seen is not coming on DVDs. It's being produced there, so, I mean, if there's equipment and there's a place, it would seem to me that the city doesn't want to go backwards away from what it has had. We seem to be a very progressive city and we move forward, so, thank you Kevin for answering that part.
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, just a clarification that Kevin, are, what are the legal requirements for the spending of that money? You had talked about being capital, but that 1 point whatever million, does it have to be spent on public access television?
No.
And how much, there's no requirement in that? I mean, out of that money, is there any that's required to be spent on it?
No, there's no legal obligation.
And Mayor, that's why I want to make sure the council knows, that money goes in directly into the general fund. That's what we're using to pay for police services, for parks and recreation, all the other general funds.
Well, you know, that's what I was going to say. I mean, I have a friend who's a fireman in Glendale and they've been given the mandate, police and fire, 7 to 9%, slash it. I don't know how to look somebody in the eye and say, "Yeah, I know, we could have put an extra few deputies out there, but we, you know, we decided to..." And that's right now. And you know what? Maybe, knock on wood, in six months, everything's great and, you know, we're rolling in it again, but right now, I just think it's a kind of a scary thing. I like the idea of doing this for six months, giving us the time to re-examine what this would mean, what this partnership or consortium of different existing media entities would look like if they all came together. I, you know, I think we want to at least be able to provide the bare minimum so that we don't have to shut the lights off, but I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea to wait six months and to look at the whole thing again.
Thank you. Okay, if I go?
Yep.
Leon Warden, could you come forward?
Good evening again, Mayor.
Good evening. Clearly, finances is a significant part of the decision this evening. Would you articulate how you believe this thing will be carried out financially?
Absolutely. Now, let me address first franchise fees. As was articulated this evening, you've always collected, well, at least for several years, you've always collected 5% franchise fee that's paid for by the cable customers. That amount now is 1.2 million, as you heard. You're, as of January 108, right Kevin? As of January 108, you've been collecting this additional $300,000 which can only be used for capital. So, in, with our $278,000 budget, one of the things that we are proposing is that you use a portion of the 5% franchise fee, a portion of the 1.2 million dollars, which was instituted way back when as a means of supporting public television, but is not used that way in Santa Clarita, although it's used that way in many other cities, as seed money because anybody, whether it's the city, whether it's our nonprofit, come January 1, it's a whole new world and there is no predetermined funding method because the amount of money that Time Warner has been spending for its staff of first four and then three and then now two, that $225,000 to $275,000 that Time Warner has been spending, that's out of, that's out of the equation. So we've got to figure out how we're going to fund this. The staff proposal says use $100,000 of that $300,000 basically to purchase the old equipment that Time Warner is leaving behind. The $16,000 would pay for rent at $2,700 a month on the current facility through June. And then now you're talking about spending a total of $25,000, and I don't know how you're budgeting it, but out of the general fund or out of whatever, the same pot that that 1.2 million goes into, you're talking about spending $25,000 on staff, which as you heard, will be a playback operator who will be waiting for people to submit DVDs. Now, come, with Time Warner now walking away and with the new, with a nonprofit in partnership, I'm sorry, with a nonprofit operating a television channel now, you've got some opportunities for funding methods that did not previously exist. Bottom line, nobody is going to write a grant to Time Warner Cable. But now we've got College of the Canyons, which has excellent grant writers, which is willing to step up to the table and help us with grant writing and go after arts, go after arts grants, go after education program grants. And I believe if the Hart District is a, is an example of a recent success with Homeland Security Funding, I believe that when we make Channel 20 a part of the local disaster communications network, we will be eligible for Homeland Security Funding, which College of the Canyons can help us write. Now, if we take some of that $300,000 for capital and invest it wisely and make some real strategic equipment purchases, that can be a lucrative source of income for operations. LA-36, for instance, rents out a professional production truck that it own. LA-36 is operated by a nonprofit. It's one of the channels in Los, that serves Los Angeles. They have a professional production truck, which they lease out like, remember, we're in LA. They lease it out, there's a big demand for production trucks. They lease it out like every minute that they're not using it personally and they bring in a lot of money. So if we make some strategic equipment purchases, we'll be able to bring in... So if we make some strategic equipment purchases, we'll be able to bring in operating revenue. And that didn't exist when it's Time Warner's channel. We will be able to do things like they do in Santa Barbara, where you can still allow the community, you know, obviously, we're going to be working as we do now, you know, very closely with nonprofits and providing, providing them with the services that they deserve. But you could still, if, the RFP, remember, the RFP asks for a lot of specific things. And so a lot of the policy for operating Channel 20 would be set by the operator, that being us, together with the city, and together with what's called for in the RFP, which is a nonprofit, which is a Public Television Advisory Committee, which would be set up by the city and the operator. So that entity could decide that it wanted to continue to allow the public to come in and produce programming, and then you can do what Santa Barbara does, you could charge fees for facility, you can charge, you know, all sorts of different things. Chamber and VIA are very willing to sit down and work with us to develop commercial sponsorship programs. You're absolutely right. Commercials haven't paid for anything. In fact, commercial advertising on Channel 20 has not paid a dime for Channel 20 operations because Channel 20 operations were always separate, they were always covered by Time Warner. But we'll be able now to develop commercial programs to, you know, it's tough times. You've, there aren't a lot of advertising dollars to go around. But when times are better, I would anticipate that we could bring in some revenue with commercial programs. I don't think that, I think your big ones, right at the outset, are going to be grant funding. I think they're going to be good equipment purchases and rental, and I think they're going to be user fees. And then...
Got to wrap it up, boy.
You're going to have a diminishing amount of money out of this 1.2 million that you're going to need to use. Max 278, right up front.
But Ken, what I'm hearing is the 1.5 million or the...
Thank you, Leon.
The franchise money that we're getting goes to pay for police and other, it's committed. In other words, it's not available. Is that correct?
That's correct. The reason why we get the money in the first place is to compensate the city for the use of our right-of-way. That's where the cables go. And all of that money is committed for things in the budget that the city council's already approved.
Okay. Because, because I, there's, there's a gap there between what, we just don't have $235,000 to commit right now.
That's correct.
So, so I'm not sure exactly how this would work, but I'm sure there's a way to be able to have, figure out what monies will be coming in in order to be able to continue the level that at least we've got right now. So, I guess we do need to have a time in there between what we figure out what we're going to need to do and what we're going to do. I just don't want to make a commitment to keeping this in-house for any long period of time.
Can I finish my thoughts before we go to you, Frank? Appreciate Leon coming forward, and obviously, I can see where there could be some, a little bit of confusion and concerns as to where appropriate funding will be drawn upon to make this, this happen. I feel very strong about this. I think some excellent, excellent points were brought forward by our speakers tonight, and some things that Lorraine touched upon and others up here have as well. The importance of government not being too far involved in anything having to do with news and things of this kind. But I got to tell you what I feel very, very strong about, and that is the partnership aspect. We have an absolutely incredible, I think it's almost a zero failure rate when we have teamed up with various entities in this community, school districts, water districts, you name it. We have a long list of huge accomplishments in this community by doing that. And here, we have tonight, coming before us, College of the Canyons, The Signal, the radio station, the Heart School District, all willing to come in and be viable participants in making this a premier public access television station. And I clearly recognize the concerns of our staff on this thing. I think they've got some valid points. I kind of go back to some of the things that Marcia has touched upon. I really feel that we need to agendize this for the meeting of, what is it, November the 25th, and have it come back. And in the meantime, I feel that staff should make a concerted effort to meet with all of these participants at a table and have some direct discussion on how we can put this team of people together, entities together, and review the financials as to how they would be viable and workable so that we can move forward. The educational aspect of this is huge for this community. And it's clear to me that if we go, from the city's standpoint alone, and try to operate this, a lot of these very important aspects of our community are going to go by the wayside. There's no way that we can possibly handle those, in my humble opinion. And I don't think we can afford to do that. And particularly, when we have the educational system behind us, and The Signal, and the KHTS, these are important aspects of this community, and we should be working together to ensure that we have the best possible public access for our community. That's my thoughts on it, ladies and gentlemen.
Can I make that a motion, Mayor?
I will, but I want to afford Frank an opportunity because he said he had comments.
Absolutely.
Well, I'm going to concur with the mayor. I mean, Channel 20, we have a unique opportunity. It needs to be better for the city and its residents. I mean, to be candid, those people who are most passionate about it are the reason why people watch. When you have Newsmaker, Leon, you watch. When you have Phil Scorsese or the Heart District TV, and then Phil does, I want to say, The Heel-Houser Show, Phil, I don't know the name of, I can't think of it, but I like it, when you go around and show me the points of interest. I love that show. I love, I'll tell you, Dave Codwell and I, I remember, and Ken remembers, when we did the live Heart Valencia game, and Dave was up on City Hall with the satellite dish, and I was over at Valencia with the satellite dish, and we're looking at each other, pointing, and I had to talk, "Keso at Frontier Toyota, we need 5,000 to make this work." He's like, "Oh, Frank, you're killing me." Well, now, he got so much publicity off that, he's now the Toyota Game of the Week because he realized it was just a small investment, and everybody watches the game of the week throughout the week. Those shows are great, but let's be honest, for every five, six shows I just mentioned, the rantings and ravings of just people by the tiki hut with, you know, monorails to the sheriff, you know, come on. It's either going to be better or it's not. And so I do agree with the mayor that Lena Smythe, I'd like to see in the room, Lena used to run a Antelope Valley, a daily Antelope Valley news show, and it was amazing. I saw it. So I agree, I think COC, Heart District, SCTV, the city, The Signal, KHTS, Chamber, VIA, Lena, all should get in the room because when it comes back to the council, we should know what we're spending our money on. I really believe that to be true.
Can I just say that, Frank, you hit the nail on the head. The fact of the matter is, it couldn't be better till now because the cable operator didn't care, and we care. So I think this...
And the community cares.
The community cares a lot, and this can be an amazing turn in just opening up a wonderful opportunity for the community if the community is, is involved in directing it. And Time Warner wasn't there, I mean, they didn't live here, they didn't care. So this is an opportunity, but I agree that we, we need to hear it.
Mayor, just a clarification, when you're talking about partnerships, I assume you mean economic partnerships as well?
Yes, I do.
And so that it wouldn't be just, great, you can, we'll pay for it, you come use it, you're going to, you can use it, you can help pay for it?
Absolutely.
Kind of a deal, okay.
The whole gamut.
Okay.
Absolutely. Somebody care to make a motion?
I move that we direct this back to staff to work with all of the individuals that were just mentioned, and it come back at a appropriate council meeting. I don't know what that date would be.
November 25th, I believe, is our next scheduled, regularly scheduled.
Well, whenever the city manager can get it back.
I just want to remind you that that's the night that we're dealing with the hospital.
No, that's the 19th.
Well, then we're coming back the next meeting.
Could we have it at a later meeting?
I'm not, I'm not sure it can be ready by then.
Well, do you think we can get it done before the end of the year? I think that's reasonable.
I would think so, yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll make sure that it is agendized before the calendar year.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Real call, please.
Councilmember West?
Aye.
Mayor Pretim Ferry?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Ender?
Yes.
Mayor Keller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mayor, can we have a break?
Of course, we have a break. Can I ask a favor, though? Let's make it a 10-minute break only. I know we have some people that have traveled a long distance here this evening.
Bang the gavel down, Mayor.
You'll hear from me. 10 minutes.